Tonight's Planning Commission meeting, the June 21st, 2017 meeting. I'll go over a few rules before we get started and call it a order and go through the agenda. Obviously, we have a big crowd here tonight. We have two applications. There will be three opportunities to speak tonight as far as public comments. The first one will be a general comment session if you're here not on one of the applications, and you want to make a comment to the commission in general about planning, if you have one in mind, and certainly we'd love to hear that. There will be two other public comment sessions, and each application will have a public comment session. So, if you're here on one of those applications, that could get maybe you're here on that to wait for that time, and that session is over. That'll kind of say it. We had a lot of folks here tonight. We'll keep your comments to three minutes. We'll be timing that. I'll try to give you a key when we're getting close to the end, try to give you a little time. Any questions regarding? Okay. We'll call it the Planning Commission meeting for tonight to order. First argument on the agenda is to adopt the agenda. Gentlemen, you have the copy of the term and you hear a motion to adopt.
Gentlemen, please.
Sir, second?
Second.
As far as the minutes with regards to the last, we're still waiting on those. So you've had no minutes to review, but we would have a couple of meetings, seven minutes to review prior to the next meeting. Then we email that some stuff. Now we get to the public comment session. Again, I'll give you the outline of how not this business will go. I'll open up the first comment session for just general comments. There being none, we'll move along. Just think you name the district you're from when you're going to speak. We'll get that to the rep.
Phil Irwin, Flint Hill. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The supervisors are blessed with having a microphone so that the public can participate in this public meeting. May I suggest that the microphone would be equally helpful for the planning commission. Thank you, sir.
Good suggestion. Everybody talks loud like you and I, right? What? (laughter). Any other comments? I'll close the first public comment session, and we'll move on to the first item of business tonight. There being no old business, we'll go to new business. This kind of special exception, seventeen oh five oh six.
This is Allnell Farm LLC, owner of tax map five, parcel fourteen, containing four hundred and thirty-two acres, located at fifty Windsor Lodge Farm, Flint Hill, Virginia. An easement owner and co-applicant Windsor Lodge Lodge Stables LLC, tax map thirteen, parcel one forty-five, at twenty-four Windsor Lodge Lane, both in the Wakefield District. Desire a conference center, event venue on the Allnell Farm property. Tonight, we're only going to hear the special exception only. The tourist home will be advertised and heard next month. The zoning ordinance refers to conference centers. That is the category it falls under, but what that technically means is that it's for events. So, for example, it means like a wedding event. It could be a hundred people or up to two hundred people. So that happens to be the name of the category in the zoning ordinance. There were some questions about whether neighbors were properly notified. We feel that the ad was ran in the paper for two weeks as required, and that it was noticed at the property, and that our obligations have been met. So with that, I'll turn it back over to you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman. Again, I believe the applicant is represented by counsel. At this purpose, Chairman. Brown, you have a slightly dressed commission on behalf of your...
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I am Michael Brown, partner with Rockwell and Walker Jones, with offices in Washington, Virginia, and Moreton, Indiana. I'm here on behalf of the applicants, Allnell Farm LLC and Windsor Lodge Stables LLC, and its principal, the principal of both of those entities, which is Mrs. Cooley, who's here this evening. This is an application which has the unfortunately grandiose title of conference center slash resort, as Ms. Kaiser alluded to a moment ago. That's only because that's the name that's applied to it in the list of categories in our zoning ordinance, and it's defined as a use which provides temporary lodging, meals, entertainment, recreation, et cetera, for more than forty persons in a rural setting. Well, the commission members could tell from that very broad definition of conference center or resort that there are a lot of different kinds of uses that might fall within that category. In this specific instance, the applicant is seeking permission by way of a special exception to host up to four events. That's four for the entire year, between the months of April and November, on the property of Allnell Farm LLC. Combinations for all of these events, which will be in the nature of wedding receptions, family reunions, retreats, business retreats by business, all of those will take place in a temporary tent that will be put up on the property and taken down after each use. The access for this, the area where the events will be located crosses the, crosses the property of Windsor Lodge Stables off of Jericho Road, and that's why the two entities have applied for the use. It is served by a fifty-foot wide easement. All of the partying which appears in the material is on the property of Allnell Farm We have submitted in the file comments from Randy Norris. He's an engineer at VDOT and has reviewed the entrance into the property. He had no concerns regarding the entrance for the use that's proposed. His only substantive comment was that he thought that the surveyor or engineer should review the stopping distance on the road as it comes up to the entrance, and that is something that the applicant will have prepared and submitted at times in the Board of Supervisors meeting. There are very few specific conditions, special conditions, that apply to this kind of use, two of which don't even apply to this specific application. Two of them relate to if there are going to be the development and construction of any permanent facilities on the property. These appear in section one seventy dash sixty-five and in your zoning ordinance. In those two cases, since there are going to be no new permanent structures erected on the property in connection with this use, they simply don't apply. The other two relate to the location of any structures that will be used in connection with the proposed use. That is, it provides that they must be located more than one hundred feet from any property line. Again, the application materials reflect that this, the area for these events is well within the interior of Allnell Farm, and it's largely surrounded by woods because of the location of this area. It's in around a pond area. It's in most of a sort of a natural boll market on the property, and we believe that the use, the specific event area, is likely not going to be visible from any other properties. If it is, it's only going to be very tangential. The other standard, and that's the second standard that applies, that is the screening of the use from adjoining properties. Given the size of the events and that the applicant intends to host, that is, for not more than two hundred people, and not more than four events per year between the months of April and November, the applicant has deliberately placed before you a very conservative, very limited application designed to minimize any conceivable impact on the neighborhood or on the adjoining property. Of course, would be glad to entertain and have the Planning Commission recommend any conditions that the commission members feel are appropriate to pass along and forward with hopefully a recommendation for approval to the Board of Supervisors. I'd like to take just a few seconds and have the other family member who's involved in this application, that's Ms. Cooley's daughter Stephanie Gorman, rise and speak for just a few seconds. Thank you.
Say your name.
Stephanie Gorman, Flint Hill. Okay. So, we are here today to hopefully help everyone understand the intent of the event venue. Would you please speak up? Okay.
They need you to come right here.
For me? Okay. The event venue that everyone is concerned about will only host up to four events a year and a max of two hundred guests, which is very minimal and should be little impact on our neighbors. Windsor Lodge Farm has accommodated private events in the past with no adverse impact or traffic issues for our neighbors. Of course, we don't want this new business venue to be disruptive or impact anyone. That is why we chose to only host four events a year. An example could be a wedding, a family reunion, or a business event. The business venue would help generate money for the farm as well as the cattle. We also plan to promote local businesses for catering, restaurants, spa services, gas stations, and the list goes on. As everyone is well aware, we take great pride in our farm. It would not start a business venue that would in any way have a negative effect on the farm. Thank you.
I will now open up public comment session for this particular application. If you'll state your name, your district, and again, we're going to keep this for about three minutes. And I'll try to give you a...
Would you like me to stand up?
If you don't mind, I think that'd be beneficial.
My name is Stratton Sims. I'm in the Wakefield District, and I live one field over from Cooley's. My sister, Darren Winchester, owns that field that's in between us. I also own land that shares a property line with the Cooley's. It's a wooded lot, and it's known as, it's in LLC. For years, when I was in Annapolis, I was a landscape architect, and I was at a lot of hearings just like this. However, I have to say, none of them affected my, my personal property directly. And I am aware that Annapolis at the time was at a watershed moment of development, and there, and I think Rappahannock is at the same place right now. You know, everyone says, if you want things to be different, you have to make a change. The opposite is also true. If you want things to remain the same, you can't change too many things. Having said that, my family and the Cooley family have enjoyed good relations for a long time. My father and Freddie were friends. They enjoyed being members of, you know, the original lunch bunch, and they flocked on it together. Although the Cooley's cattle are not on my land right now, or my sister's, they were for decades. They wandered freely from one meadow to the next. I firmly believe that people should be able to do what they want on their private property up to a point. And one has to think about where one draws lines, what those lines look like, and when one draws them. I don't have the answer to these questions, but I think we really need to look at this at this time. I have no issue with it. I have no issue with the idea of the B and B, you know, and we'll discuss that later, but my concerns about the event venue are traffic, and I think that's a big problem, and I certainly do not encourage anyone to think about expanding the roads at this time. The bigger issue for me is sound. Meadow Brook is across the street. They have a lot of events there, and I hear everything. I can practically participate in conversations that are going on. So I am concerned about that. I know that sound comes from the Cooley property because we hear their harvesting operations for weeks on end in the fall, but we accept that because it's farming, and they're a real farm, and they're trying to do it properly. So I know that we're in an unusual environmental situation because of our mountains, and we're lucky, but I just, I think that it's, I'm not against the idea of any of us trying to figure out how to be physical in sound and keep our properties, you know, out of the red, but I think we really need to be careful about how we perceive, and I think we need to know more about the details of this and the sound issue before we move forward. It's not, I'm not definitely a no, but I just want to know more. Thank you.
My name's Gus Forebush. I live at thirty-nine Foxhall Farm Lane with my wife Sandra. I'm in Foxhall Farm. I feel like a newcomer right now. I've only been here thirty-five years. I've seen a lot of changes that somebody can agree with. This, there's no way in the world we can agree with it for a number of reasons. We already have two venues right there. We have Wakefield School. You can rent that anytime you want. We got Meadow Brook. Something going on this weekend. We have Flynn Gordon right there. You did a great job. We have Manhattan Cellar right there, corner in the corner in Fall Care. You got it there. So, the market's saturated. We don't need any more of this there. We need a piece of quiet. I'm old. I just had a couple bypass operations. I need my, my, my doctor told me not to get excited, so I'm not going to do it. So, but we're just thoroughly against it. And my number one reason is safety. That bridge that was just put in by VDOT, we have a brand new bridge. I just measured it. I went down this evening, measured my truck first. I have a GMC pickup. Outside, we have the mirrors, it's nine foot, all right? That's one truck. No truck gets in that bridge at nine footer, and you got eighteen feet. I measured the bridge. I didn't, I just picked a random point. The inside of the guardrail is twenty-one feet four inches. You know, you're saying what you're... But you're a numbers man. I know. All right? I came up with a calculation of, we have forty inches to be shared three ways. You figure the middle, one, and then on each side. So you have forty inches to deal. You divide three and forty inches, you got thirteen inches to clear. Now that's if the trucks get in square. The access to this bridge, it's absolutely horrible. It's terrible. So bad that the VDOT posted these signs. Now that is a right angle, ninety-degree turn. Now, they lowered the speed on it to twenty-five. There is no possible way two vehicles can meet on this bridge. So it's horrible. Thing should have been corrected in the beginning, but as we all know, it wasn't. This is a disaster. All right, now, you got two hundred people back there. Conceivably, you could have two hundred vehicles. You figure your caterers, your bartenders, your support staff. So you have two hundred people. All right, this thing doesn't end until, the party doesn't end until after dark. Two hundred vehicles coming out of that, out of that road down a steep hill at forty, at forty-five miles an hour. Now, it's supposed to drop back to twenty-five. Will it? Who knows? All right, say there's an accident in that bridge, and there will be. I'll bet on it. And the roads stop, stopped up. People are hurt. You need rescue vehicles. You need a lot of help there. All right, it's at night. There's no lighting down here. Halfway through our road is a farm called Windsor, Schloss Murray River. That house that is on fire, all right? You gotta have the fire trucks, Jack. We need tanker. We need, we need help in there. How you gonna get there if our road's closed? You can't. The Steel Thrust Bridge is obsolete, downgraded eleven tons. What is your fire tanker weight? Can you get over that bridge? I don't know. That's the fire chief's thing.
I think we understand.
Can you get my phone?
We get you.
Well, that's just one reason, but I also would respectfully like some medical tissue for this board.
Right here.
These are adjoining and adjacent windows. I believe I got all of the adjoining windows. I'm sorry, this. My only respect accounted to me personally for the notification process, but we didn't get much of that. But we got, the words are out there. You were... So, if I had time, I'd like to read that, but if I don't know.
A bit of time. Yeah, I gave you a couple extra seconds.
I would like to explain these things now. Some of them aren't, but not less than I can explain them all.
Most of them are here tonight. If we have any questions, we'll... Their number phone number, don't they? Thanks.
Well, thank you very much for your time. I appreciate it.
My name is Tom Dalton, and I'm a Wakefield, and I'm a share of boundary with the Cooley's. They're directly to the south roommate. I have major concerns, noise. One of the other issues I have is there's going to be parking issues, lights. One of the things that's nice about Rappahannock County is they want to keep it dark, and you don't have to see headlights or whatever. And the other main issue that I have is several years ago, I think it was the Jordan River Farm, tried to do something similar to this, but when they did have an event, noise issue. I enjoyed living in the country, and that's why I, that's the way I feel. I moved out here, I used to live in Potomac Maryland, and Potomac Maryland used to be like Rappahannock, and I don't want to see Rappahannock turn into something like Potomac. Thank you.
Hello, Sandra Forebush, thirty-nine Foxhall Farm Lane, the Wakefield District. I am strongly opposed to the proposal of Mrs. Cooley and family in making a commercial venue of her farm, Windsor Lodge, Allnell Farm, or any of her land. I have lived and owned Foxhall Farm since nineteen seventy-seven, and my husband has been here for thirty-five years. I am a very proud person and love the peace and quiet of where I live. Mrs. Cooley's farm is right across the road from Foxhall Farm. I am very upset over how this will change our lives and how it will affect Rappahannock County and devalue my property and all the farms and houses in that area. My husband and I are not in good health. Gus had a triple bypass surgery in March. I am in constant pain, crippled and slumped over in my back from the automobile accident. I know what it is to have a life debilitating accident. Why would you even want to listen to traffic of a hundred, two hundred cars up and down the road, country road, with a very dangerous hazardous curve outside our farm entrance? Why would we want to listen to music and two hundred people partying and drinking? This is so unreasonable even to consider. I asked all of you on the board to visit Foxhall Farm and see our land and how close it is to Windsor Lodge, and see how quiet and still and peaceful and surroundings are. Also, to see the road with the dangerous curve. It's a real traffic hazard connected with this application. The traffic will be ongoing for days and weeks in preparation for an event. What will this skew the value of Foxhall Farm? It has been my home, and I love it. Who would want to buy Foxhall Farm right across the road from a commercial, commercial venue with two hundred people drinking and driving on a country road? Who would even consider purchasing a farm with such close proximity to this? This farm is to be my daughter and granddaughter's inheritance. I have been protecting and caring for this farm since the beginning, knowing someday I would pass it on to my family. My daughter used to ride her bike on the road. She now jobs on the road when she doesn't. I hope my grandchildren will do the same. Horses are ridden up and down our road. Farm equipment and tractors are used on our road. We have neighbors that walk their dogs on the road and jog up and down the road.
Thirty seconds.
How much?
Thirty seconds.
Thirty what?
Thirty seconds.
Cross, Wakefield County base school uses this as her training ground. The highway, the proposal quotes, a limited number of events, short distance from Zachary Taylor Highway to therefore minimize the traffic. The distance is not short. It is one and a half miles from our entrance. As you approach Foxhall Farm, there's a new bridge with a very hazardous curve. The two hundred people on the road with alcohol involved, caterers employed, help musicians, alhouse providers, et cetera, and local traffic, and you have a serious problem. Why wouldn't this road straight when they made the bridge? Who are the people that are going to be driving on this road? Where do they come from? You never know these days who carries firearms. Will there be police protection? Should we be concerned for our safety? However, when you open your land to public, anyone can come. What is happening to Rappahannock County? This is our future, the future government.
Mr. Chairman and members of the commission, I'm Jeanne Clemens, and my husband and I are residents at twenty ninety-eight Jericho Road in the Wakefield District, and our property adjoins on the east Mrs. Cooley's. Mrs. Cooley called me about a week ago and told me that her farm had not been profitable for a number of years, and that she was making this application as a means of raising revenue in order to be able to continue to maintain the farm. I can understand the issues with farming because my husband is a beef cattle farm, but I do not favor this application. I want you and Mrs. Cooley and her family to know that my husband and I hold no ill will toward them. We have been guests at their farm, and they have been guests at our farm. But I am concerned that if this application is approved, it will fracture the relationship of those who live in the neighborhood. And I might add that although not on your agenda tonight, I have not heard from anyone in the community that they have any objection to her forthcoming application with tourist home.
Stay focused on the...
Yes. Wanted to make that point.
Yes, ma'am.
So, speaking for myself only because I am concerned that if approved, the application would fracture the neighborhood and still not give her the revenue that she needs to keep the farm in operation, I respectfully request of Mr. Brown and Ms. Cooley in this board that they withdraw the application and pursue the other options Mrs. Cooley told me on the phone are already legally available to her. Thank you for your...
Yeah, Mr. Chairman. David Connick from Stone Mole District. I don't have any, I don't live near there now. I don't have any fish to fry in this particular application except the integrity of the zoning ordinance, and I'm very troubled by this application compared to, for example, the Fletcher applications last month because it sounds to me like what they want to do is almost exactly the same thing. It's a bunch of, I don't know, field parties basically, unspecified in number, and all the objections that the board supervisors heard. I don't know, we had a big crowd at the supervisor meeting that didn't show up here last month, but the concerns that were expressed by the neighbors were virtually identical to these concerns that these neighbors have expressed, and yet somehow it's in a different category, and I really don't understand why that is. It was my suggestion, the hearing that the supervisors had, it's my suggestion tonight, that really you ought to take a look at this provision of the ordinance, at the field party provision of the ordinance, and the festival party provision of the ordinance, because they're all the same type of activity of lots of people coming in, doing lots of different events, and yet for some reason, and I'm not sure what that reason is, they get into different categories, and one, they just say, okay, you've got a blanket permit, but when Fletcher wanted a blanket permit, everybody said, oh, no, you can't have a blanket permit. You might have thousands of people coming there, and there are hundreds of people, and the Ku Klux Klan might show up, somebody said, and so... Klan might show up, somebody said, it took up the zone. But I think all these, what I'm saying is all these things ought to be treated in a similar way and it isn't fair to these applicants or Mr. Fletcher, anybody else who applies to have it treated differently. I think before you approve this, and I noticed that Mr. Brady's not here and Mr. Light's not here, Mr. Henry's not here, it's Mr. Brady's district, I think at a minimum you ought to defer this until next month so that all the commissioners can have their, because this is a big thing, and see what they want to do. And I really think that the best thing to do is defer this and the others as well and really take a hard look at the zoning ordinance and see what changes ought to be made so that all these types of uses that are similar in nature like this are all treated the same way. Thank you.
My name is Monica Worth and I'm in Escaree, Virginia. I just heard two very different versions of the story from Mr. Conick and Mrs. Cooley's attorney. I heard four events a year and I heard a limit on the number of people at each event. And I live in an area at Ashby and Woodward Road in which there were four events a year for a number of years held by my neighbor John Halbert in support of his business. And as long as those events were four a year, they were quite tolerable in the neighborhood, even though they had their traffic issues and the roads weren't quite ready for them and there were some issues with fire and rescue, getting in and out, a lot of things that weren't ideal. The neighbors being part of the neighborhood were willing to support Mr. Halbert in pursuit of the business. He wanted to expand that into far more events and we got together with him and talked to him about that and kept up on it and that didn't happen. So it seems to me that as long as certain restrictions are placed on the number of events, the perhaps the time and music can be played into a night or a variety of different things that are available under this process as far as I know, four events a year does not destroy the tranquility of my neighborhood and I don't imagine it destroys the tranquility of any part of Rappahannock if it helps to maintain the open land and the use of the land as it is now primarily being used.
Thank you. Someone else have their hand up?
Yes, sir. My name is Gail Johnson. I live at 1709 North Poles Road in Wakefield District. I'm quite a ways away from the Cooley Farm, so the only impact would be basically traffic that decides to come in on North Poles Road off of 647. And that's a very windy, difficult road and that would be a great concern to me if people decided to go that way. Other than that, I am 100% in agreement with Stratton Sens' position on it.
I now close Special Reception 170506 of the non-adjournant session in turn to the commissioners. Gentlemen, we are a little light tonight because of vacations and so forth, but we do have a farm, so. Bird, can I start with you on your answer?
Absolutely. It seems to me here, the question at hand, there are two real questions. One is the impact on the neighbors with respect to noise and perhaps light, but probably noise is the main one. And the other is the reasonable availability of the property from a transportation point It seems that there are means to limit the noise by, with respect to the hours that music and loud noise are available and there isn't much means of limiting or changing the road. And it would seem to me to, that further study or a better understanding of what I have anyway, up to be spent on arriving at the, or ascertaining that the road and transportation accessibility is sufficient for this kind of a thing. That's basically my concerns about it, limiting the amount of noise to very reasonable hours and making sure, I would think this is something that the Department of Transportation could be asked of, the pass on.
Thank you, Mr. Bird. Mr. Brown?
Well, I agree, we need to have a better understanding of the traffic situation because if there's an air bridge, I drove up through there, I couldn't find the place, but I drove right past it like I usually do anything. But it seems that more neighbors oppose it than agree with it. So we have to take into consideration the opposition to it. They need to get together and try to work out something where they can come to agreement with the neighbors before we approve or disapprove. That's all I have.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, a few thoughts. I am focused on the fact that this is up to four events a year, which doesn't strike me as frankly that many for a property which, again, in comparison to a previous application, was a lot more events that were proposed. But four seems a manageable amount. The application, Mr. Brown's pretty well, pretty well written, pretty well thought out, but as Mr. Bird said, there's a devil's in the details here with the conditions that we may need come up with here with respect to concerns that I heard from many of the neighbors as it relates to noise and light and traffic. We don't have an opinion or a letter from our fire and rescue folks about what they think of being able to cover events like this. And I am a little concerned whether or not the parking screen is adequate as they described it. I understand it's screened by topography, but we want to look at that a little bit closer or understand that a little bit better. But is it development? No, or somebody called it development and I don't, I don't, would call it that. It fits with the comprehensive plan and the concept of the county to promote ecotourism. I'm not sure I buy into the police protection and firearms argument. I'm not sure I buy into the fact that there may be 200 vehicles at every event even though there may be up to 200 people. But maybe that's worth taking a closer look at as well. Point being, Mr. Chairman, you know, it would, I think, be good if this board had an opportunity to take a half step back and look at this in its entirety. Maybe there's a checklist that we can come up with that we can use not only for this applications, application, but ones we've received in the past to make sure that we're looking at everything. Because I think this does, you know, this, this may have, you know, this may have an impact on not only this area, but also any applications that may come forward or ones we've seen so far. So, and there is the matter of representative of the Wakefield District not being here tonight and the commission being a little bit short on attendance. So I think this, I think this because it's negative, it's a little bit more study and I'm of the mindset that we perhaps table it and take it up for further consideration and bring it back to the planning commission before it gets moved to the Board of Supervisors. But that's my, that's my question.
Just a couple of observations, gentlemen. I've traveled that road, Jericho Road, a lot of times, if you're on strip, not so much, a little older, but tend to stay home a little bit more these days. My concern kind of dovetails with what you said, Mr. Bird. You know, first off about, I think coming in all 5.2, you know, it's a fairly decent road, not that far up to the entrance where the term to go to is Drudge's Act. But coming from the other way is concerns me more this day and time where everybody has one of these and they'll get the GPS and punch that in. It typically takes them through not the safest way, but sometimes the back way. And that's okay, it's a nice scenic ride through there, no question about it, but to your point, it's not as, the condition of that road is not as good as it is coming off 5.2, seven miles. So I would say that maybe, maybe that goes in line with having more information from DOD and what the impact of an event, more events, each having up to 200 people. And I would agree with you, John, I don't know that I, it tends to be 200 cars, but typically that's not the case, but I guess we have to look at it at the worst case scenario. And what's to say if there's fire apparatus that needs to come from Mr. Atkins' area in Amosville and they come through the back way and have to come through 647, I think that has to be a consideration as well. And I think that goes along with the checklist maybe that you're talking about is it's just too easy to ask our volunteers, our folks in Fire and Rescue Association, what they think, a lot of years of experience out there, a lot of them natives, they understand these roads and I think that maybe that's a valid, a valid block to check, if you will. You know, I'm not, Mr. Conick made a good statement, I think someone, maybe the speaker tonight, talked about Rappahannock, maybe it's a watershed moment for Rappahannock County and we have some robust laws codes on the book that allow us to enjoy what we have today and people that sat at these tables before we got here, thank goodness for their wisdom. Maybe we are at a point where we need to revisit and codify and put some limits on these type of applications. And I don't know what that is, but I think it deserves probably the discussion. It might include us, VZA, you'd even obviously at the board level to maybe brainstorm on this. There will be another event and I don't think four events is too much to ask at that location. I've been there a couple of times, a long time ago, me and your husband was living and we were working on that cabin, putting on that mighty rock and oh, it's a beautiful place back there. I'm going to have a wedding there too, probably. But I think it's time for us to maybe have this tough conversation and revisit that. So, I thought, but getting back to this particular application, I would tend to agree, maybe there's a little more, a few more answers we need here to make it a time for the neighbors to communicate a little bit and look and see what other options are that might make this an easier passage, at least to me, I speak for the other commission. I don't think this is out of line from what we've had before, but it's a little different time, I believe personally. Any further comments, gentlemen?
I have a question.
You know, Mr. Chairman, a couple of points. I don't think, in fact, that there are four other competing venues in this area, or necessarily think that we can have a fifth. I think the market will sort that out. But I, I agree with the underlying theme here of the concern about traffic and whether we have proper road infrastructure and what is in fact that's supported by that bridge. You're not going to have three vehicles trying to go over that bridge. It's a rural area, sometimes you will have one lane bridges and I know this one's not a one lane bridge. So, but I do think that needs to be looked at. So, and then fire and rescue also, so to that extent, I think that's where the, you know, I would, I would think we need a little bit more work to get a little bit more input. Agree with everybody around the table on that. With respect to your thoughts on taking a look at all the ordinances, I've been dangerous bursting in flames here, I'm not saying I agree with Mr. Conick, but.
Okay, that's it. You win.
But he raises some good points. And perhaps there's a way of trying to have better tools available to us, including maybe the checklist that we all mentioned here, because I see more of these in the future and I think we all want to make sure that we get this right.
And one other comment too. I wasn't aware, but I understand that someone said that Wakefield School, I'm assuming their cross-country team trains on that road, is that correct? That, and I would think weddings are usually on a weekend, I don't know if they train on weekends, but that may be information that would be valuable for us.
What about the preparation for that, that will be coming down the week?
Yes, ma'am, we've, we've made note of that, so.
Really, what it would seem is that we need to have a program as to building and making the checklist, protocol, whatever you want to call it. And I suppose that is this something that the zoning office can do and can contact the Department of Transportation, the fire departments and create a, it would seem to me, they are the people who would know what the checklist ought to be better than anybody. And if we had this, it would not only be useful for this particular instance, but as I think everybody here agrees, any further applications that we might put to point here. And this is something that one could then give to the applicants and say, here, these are the questions you're going to be asked and the more that you can answer effectively, the better it will be for you.
Further discussion, gentlemen? Motion over? Do I have a motion?
Questions, Chairman? One other, one other point, I would, I would not want this to sit and drag on. I mean, I think if you go to any of the surrounding jurisdictions, you know, applications that have this, potentially impact, you know, a couple, few months to improve. We have a little quicker year, for better or for worse, but I do think we're only talking about pulling the throttle back a little bit. But that said, I think if we're going to do anything like this, even though we're getting into the dead of the summer, we probably ought to figure out how we're going to do it and move on smartly. Because not only this applicant, but others, one of us specifically is waiting to hear from us. For that, I guess I would make a motion, Mr. Chairman, to table this application until such time that we better understand the traffic implications of the area, and also to have an opportunity to look at this in its totality so that we can develop some kind of guideline for reviewing the applications of these magnitudes. I know that's word, I might stray a little bit there, but I'm just trying to capture a couple of thoughts.
Ms. Kaiser, can you repeat? I'll capture those particular requests.
It was a motion to table this application until traffic implications and the opportunity to review in totality for guidelines for reviewing applications of this magnitude.
Can I add to that as well? I would like to understand more about the school and their activity on that road. Again, I doubt that that's on the weekend, it would certainly be a check that I'll have to be careful of safety.
I have a question when you finish.
Gosh, gentlemen.
So, do we have a motion here?
We have a motion as amended by the chair. As amended by one item there.
Is it up for a second?
It is.
I would second that.
Any further discussion? All in favor of tabling this with the conditions that we have articulated? Say aye.
Aye.
opposed? Save it. Here, we have another application, so more welcome. More welcome to stay. Sad bar conversation, so we can take this downstairs, gentlemen. Gentlemen, I got a little note from Ms. Kaiser, and I overlooked that note. We have a new addition to our county government here. Yes, met some of you. Our new administrator, Ms. Kaiser, you want to hear a panel of the intervention?
So, this is David Damron. He has been in zoning administration for seven or eight years in Powhatan County. He also has the background of being a law enforcement officer, state trooper. So, he comes to us with lots of experience, and we're so glad to have him on board. And he will be handling all the zoning questions and concerns and issues, so feel free to visit the office. Right now, he is right beside me, so we are getting to know each other really well.
I'm a former officer. You see me, you see the other person.
That's right. So, we don't know where he'll land, where his office will be, but once that's decided, we will certainly let you know.
Well, congratulations. So, for resurfing administrator, I could say this time will be the last time I can go to the floor.
Yeah, I follow that, I didn't come in at the beginning, but I have... Next item of the business is rezoning application, RZ 170508, O'Hara LLC, Legacy Farms Liability Corporation. Ms. Kaiser.
This is for 17, as you said, oh, five oh three. It is the Old Tala LLC owner and legacy farm market leasur of the property located at 12167 Lee Highway, Sperryville, Virginia. A portion zoned general commercial and a portion zoned agriculture. And the Piedmont District desires to rezone a part of the agricultural portion of the parcel to general commercial to allow a retail farm market family business. The use is allowed pursuant to 170-134A through J of the Rappahannock County Code. If you don't mind, I'd like to take a moment and just give just a touch of history on this. This is an application that has been heard before, which was known as Cooters or Old Tala LLC. Keep in mind that while this has been up before the planning commission twice, it was never heard or a determination made by the Board of Supervisors. So this will be the third time to the planning commission, but again, it has not been to the Board of Supervisors. I had a question during the week about the cease and desist order that had been placed on Cooters and what that meant. For this application, there was never a formal cease and desist. I met with them, we agreed, we mutually agreed that they would not continue business at Cooters, and then they since closed. So there is not a cease and desist order on this business, and nor have they been conducting business. As leasurs of the property, they have the right to go in and renovate and have construction of the facility, and that's what they've done. But as of today, the business has not been open for operation.
Excuse me, Ms. Kaiser, a point of clarification. I don't think these are tenants, I think they intend to purchase the property.
They do intend to purchase the property, but currently they are not the owners. So, this is under...
Okay, so you're calling them a tenant or lessy?
Right, at this point.
Until such time that they close on the...
Correct. And as you indicated, they are, they will purchase the property shortly. There has been one significant change since the last application, and that was that VDOT has since forbidden parking in the front of the building. So for those of you that have been here, you know, lots of people hold in the front. When Mr. McCarthy was here, he added a boundary adjustment in the back because parking needs to be on the same parcel because it was dangerous up front to park in the front. But again, VDOT has come forward and said that will no longer be allowed. And so what they're asking for is that boundary adjustment that was in the back to be rezoned to general commercial so that there will be parking availability for their business. I think that's it.
Thank you, Mr. Conick. The applicants are here, everybody.
Yes, she's over there. Thanks, sir.
How are you doing?
Good, thank you.
If you'd like to address the commission?
Yes.
Maybe if you could come up, come up there, is this your old family?
Yes, I just wanted to introduce them, I'll be the one speaking for us. Because it is a family plan, so our plan is to have a family business. This is my husband, Alan, myself, Tracy, Abdullah, our oldest daughter, Dina, who is a culinary student and will be a part of our business in the baking and the deli side. Zach is our son. He, from a very young age, has had a passion with farming and growing. So his part of the business will be gardening in the back part of the ag property and growing and farming will be his part of the business. Our youngest daughter here, Lexie, is at this point going to be a greeter for our business. She was very concerned that she didn't actually have a part there in the business of an actual job title. So we gave her the job title as greeter, so. Alan and I are the purchasers of the property at 12167 Lee Highway. In Sperryville, we reside in Amesville in Hampton District. About our business, I just wanted to touch base what the base of our business will be. The focus of our business is going to be to provide farm table products. Our plan is to include products from our family farm in Amesville as well as other local producers. We plan to be open six days a week with the hours of seven to five P.M. with extended hours during the summer and fall seasons. In the retail area of the store, we'll be offering farm fresh meats, variety of fresh produce and farm fresh eggs, jams and jellies. We also plan to offer baked goods and homemade breads as well as in-house made ice cream. Our deli part of the business will offer fresh made-to-order sandwiches, a variety of hot specials that will be offered daily, and our food service will be for carryout. Legacy Farm Market is consistent with our county's comprehensive plan. We will contribute to the economic growth of the county through our food and beverage tax. We will promote tourism, and we also offer employment opportunities for our local citizens. We also intend to continue the role and agricultural character of Rappahannock County. The past uses of this property have been farmers market, deli, antique stores. As far as my research has shown, it goes back to 1928 where it was Bradley Atkins Service Station. And we've actually found many pieces of Bradley Atkins left within that building that we plan to preserve and actually have on display within the store. We are currently, some of the issues that came with this property were a well. There were water issues in the past. We are currently having a well, a new commercial well dug. We are addressing light issues, all of our lights for any signage. We intend to have downward facing, we want to be compliant with the night skies, the dark skies of Rappahannock County. And there are two current lights that are on during nighttime hours that we are working with Rappahannock County to, I'm sorry, Rappahannock Electric to have replaced. They're going to be, we're going to continue to use them, but we're going to replace them with night sky, the dark sky compliant lighting that is now offered through Rappahannock Electric. We do not intend to have large events on the property. The septic also was an issue that was actually replaced in 2013. It's a small septic. We have a perpetual easement for the drain field for these. So we have taken, we have addressed those issues as well. We do not intend to have a public restroom because our food is carryout, we're not required by the Health Department. We have considered and are looking into other options to be able to offer that to our customers, but at this time, we've chosen to have no public restroom. The current parking area in 2013, there was a boundary line adjustment like Mrs. Kaiser did address. I think that there's no question as to why the boundary line adjustment was approved and recorded then. It was done for the safety of their customers and the purpose for parking. It's been in use, even though the zoning process had never been completed in 2013. But it has been in use. That's been the parking area for this store since 2013. It has been recorded, was verbally approved and recorded since then. I did contact VDOT. They are strongly opposed. They forbid any parking in the concrete slab area that's in front of the store, which is the original parking area for that store. Again, going back to 1928, when it was originally a Bradley Atkins Service Station. They've asked that we barricade that front concrete slab so that there is no vehicular access at all into that area. They have taken a look, and they did their site, site distance studies, and they've approved the entrance that we have on Route 211 and also the entrance that we have on Old Hala Road. They meet both, both meet their stops, their stop site.
Site distance.
Site distance, thank you. We are asking for the rezoning. At this point, after 2013, the property line adjustment was completed, again, approved and recorded. It's been in use, however, it was never completed as far as the zoning. So we now have, from the back of our commercial building forward, general, we're zoned general commercial. From the back of the building to the edge of the property, it is zoned ag. And we are not in compliance with our zoning ordinance. And my husband and I are, again, the purchasers of the property. We have a ratified contract. We have agreed with Mr. and Mrs. McNair, representing Old Hala LLC, that we're going to do a delayed settlement. There's no contingencies, we've agreed to take possession. We've started on our remodeling, general remodel of the property. So there's no, but there are no contingencies on the property. It's just a matter of a deferred settlement. So, I lost track of where I was. So our zoning, we've submitted this application for the purpose of parking for our customers. It's a safety issue, anybody in, has, I'm sure everybody at this point has been to this property. We're just feet from 211. It's actually, I was told by VDOT that it's against Virginia State law to have anybody, any vehicle backing out of that property on the current concrete slab. And our application is asking to rezone the existing gravel parking lot area, in which I've submitted the pictures, you can see. In that rezoning, we've had to add 0.06 to make sure that we clearly add both entrances so it's not a problem in the future going forward. We wanted to make sure that we've addressed all those issues. And we have done so, and in this application, we're asking to rezone again with that, an additional small boundary change included. But our application is for the rezoning of just the gravel area. We did purchase additional ag land. We intend to keep that in ag use. We're going to be growing crop on there, so that's, there's no question that won't be used for any kind of parking. Again, we'll have no large events, we're planning no large events. And it's really this rezoning is in need to be able to operate our business and be legally in ordinance with our county zoning as well as, number one, safety to our customers and ourselves and our children who will be there on a daily basis. I think that's it.
Thank you. Before you turn to the commission, I'll open up a public comments on RZ 170508, O'Hara LLC, Legacy Farms, which they're named the district.
Ms. Frances Lamont, Eastside District. I want to speak in favor of this application. I've known Tracy for about a year and gotten to know her very well. More recently, got to know her husband and her children. I have enjoyed getting to know her family. They are an ideal family, from my point of view. They're very family oriented, the kids go to Rappahannock. You may have noticed it, even with our winning basketball, basketball or volleyball? Volleyball team this year. Tracy is always at the events supporting them. They are the epitome of what I think are good families, young families that we want to support in Rappahannock County. They're very excited about this business, and as you said, they intend to run it as a family project and keep it hopefully in the family as their kids grow up. a family project and keep it hopefully in the family as their kids grow up. I see absolutely no downside to rezoning that property as commercial. In fact, I can't understand why I wasn't informed, so ask your approval.
My name is Jimmy Switler from Stonewall Hawthorne. I am not a neighbor of this property, but I grew up in Sperryville. I drive right past this property probably two, four times a week on my way to visit my mother. I hope to be driving past it in about 10 minutes because I've got a little convertible that wants me to take it to Skyline Drive before it gets dark. And if I don't do it once, then it won't start. But I wanted to come here tonight really to echo many of the comments that these ladies have said. You know, obviously, it's a no-brainer as far as this location, it's commercial. And it's always been commercial, variety of different guys and sometimes shuttered, but always commercial. But for the family itself, and my remarks are really more directed at any neighbors that may be here, I've gotten to know this family in the two years since their children have come into our school system where I'm employed, and they are just darn good people. And I can't imagine that they would be anything other than darn good neighbors. I think every commercial business wants to be a good neighbor. Sometimes things, profit motives get in the way. They do things that may irritate your neighbors. I don't see that being the case here, ever. And I mean, like I said, my experience with these people has been wonderful, and I would suspect the same will be true for any of the other neighbors in the area. And while I have the opportunity, I also want to say thank you to all of you on the board. I think most of us know how thankless this job is and the fact that you all are willing to come here and do it. First, I know you get paid so well. Besides that big paycheck, the fact that you're willing to do it, I really appreciate what you do for us here in the county. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Hi, I'm Matthew White. I live in the Demont District, on Fletcher's Milk Road. We're almost neighbors. We're maybe five or six minutes away. I've known Tracy for about a year and Alan more recently, and gotten to know some of the kids. And I'm a hopeful customer. The only thing missing tonight is some homemade ice cream. I'd like to add my support, and I know I speak for my wife on this, although that's cutthroat ground to speak for your wife, but I know she also supports this application. We keep talking about the importance of retaining good families here and promoting businesses and if not retaining businesses. This speaks directly to that. We talk about tourism and that's certainly along, so we talk about agriculture. And it seems like what Tracy and Alan and family are trying to do here is something that actually addresses all three, tourism, business, as well as agriculture, because it's almost a food-to-table kind of arrangement here. I've seen what they've been doing over there. I just really admire all the work that just, I'm not sure I put that much money into restoring that place, but you have done an amazing job. So it strikes me that their proposal, the request rather, is a very modest one. It's just for this parking. Even though it's modest, though, it's imperative. Without that parking, there's no business. So it's as essential as it is modest and seems eminently reasonable to me, and I hope that you will grant their application. Thanks.
Andrew Paley, Demont District. I am a neighbor of my, well, which is a, our property, two parcels of, the subject property. And I objected to the McNear application because it seemed plainly that Ben Jones wanted a fair ground and that his commercial expansion was far greater than what he was applying for. What the Abduls are applying for seems to me to be entirely consistent with the historic use of the property, and I have no objection. Thank you.
Sharon Luke. And aside on the property that's across Old Hola Road, went on 211. It's actually, there's a little error in the application. It's actually owned by LLC, Riveton LLC. It's not owned by the year generally. But I just want to say that I have no objection to their business or the parking area being used for the business. I am a little concerned about a blanket general commercial rezoning because someday the Abduls will not run this business and someone else might come in and want to put something else in there. So I would ask them if they would be willing to proffer off other uses other than parking lot. In other words, so that it is a parking lot only and not just anything that can be done in a commercial zone, because there's a whole long list of things that can be done in general commercial zoning that we might not want on that corner. I have no problem with the parking lot, and there is a process where the applicant can proffer, I think, and they haven't yet, I don't think, but they can do that, I think, anytime until it's a public hearing before the Board of Supervisors. I think that's correct. So if they would be willing to proffer off everything but parking in that area, I would certainly feel much more comfortable than having seen the county just rezone it part blanche, you know, commercial. And then someday down the road, we have something else coming in there permitted by right in general commercial. We started off with a 1/10 spot zoning, 1/10 general commercial, and now we're, if it is rezoned, general commercial, it's going to be four times the size that was originally spot zoned there. It's going to be four tenths of an acre instead of one tenth of an acre. Now, I don't know what can come in that space, you know, and still four tenths of an acre is not a big piece, but there are a lot of things in general commercial zoning that we might not want there permitted by right in the future. I'm totally in support of their business and they're using that for parking, but not to repeat myself, I just don't think we should part blanche rezon it. They should, I'm asking if they would be willing to proffer off everything except parking.
I'm Steve Hensel. I have a farm over in Cassleton. When Cooters had that property, I quite often took farm workers over there to get meals. It was good food. It was inexpensive. It was a cool place. Whenever we had guests, they always wanted to go over there. I am part of the reenacting unit, which is going to be working with Cooter at his new location for Cooter's last stand, which occurs in July. So I was over there inspecting the property last weekend, and you know, there's a slamming business over there. I mean, even that old Outlands bike parking lot was overflowing with the amount of people that's in there. They've now rented places all over the raid. Campgrounds are full, hotels are full. So I'm not saying who said what, who did what, but when we lost that business, what we gained is all the air pollution from those cars as they drive right through our county to go over to the next town. So I don't know these people personally, really. I mean, my daughter does sports and things like that, that's all I know. What I'd like to see is a nice business back in there. And if we start nickel and diming the zoning again, we're going to run into these problems either, you know, soon down the road or with the next business. I mean, just give them the zoning, give them a park and let them get into business. And then hopefully, you know, I've got another place to go eat in this county and take people and things like that. So I have no objection. I would really like to see this thing get, take off and get going. So I just ask that you all approve the zoning. I mean, it's out there on Florland Highway. When somehow two festival halls got put up adjacent to my farm and nobody cared about traffic, the pollution, the trespassing, I cannot see how we can object to this place where it's situated in the past or in the future or right now. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. David Cox again from Stonewall. I want to agree with what Sharon Luke said. I think she's exactly right. And first of all, this, I mean, and I also want to say that I've met the folks there and they're very nice people and what their business proposal is is all great, but that doesn't really have much to do with the decision that's before you, and that is, should the property be rezoned or not? Because like Sharon said, someday they might have to sell it or they might move away or whatever. And the issue is, I mean, I frankly misunderstood the application when I saw it. I didn't read very carefully, but I didn't, I didn't see a drawing that showed that the park that was going to be rezoned is only the gravel parking lot. So that's a big comfort. I thought they were going to rezone the whole thing. And that I would oppose, but even the parking lot, I think if that's what they want to do, they ought to proffer it. Because as Sharon said, once it's rezoned, the general commercial, I mean, who's got the ordinance tonight? Go look in there. There's a whole long list of things that they could put in. They could raise that building and put all different manner of things in there today or some future owner could do that. And I think that would be a mistake because this was probably a mistake to spot zone that when it was done. We already discussed that at a previous meeting when one of the other applications was out. So I think that was a mistake, but anyway, there it is. I think for the safety reasons, it's a great idea. Let them have the park in there. If they were proffered, that that's all to make a proffer, that it's only going to be used for parking lot and the existing footprint of the store is not going to be changed, then that's great. But if they're not going to agree to that, it's a whole different ball of wax in my estimation, and it's set a precedent because once you expand it, as was said, it's a quadrupling of the commercial area. Some other neighbor adjacent to it thought, say, okay, across the way, I want commercial zone too, and that's not in the comprehensive plan. A comprehensive plan has a map in it of exactly where a future commercial development's supposed to be, and it's up by the co-op and the bank and all up and around in there. It's not in this area. And the other thing I would like to say is that in addition to it not being in the comprehensive plan as an area, I think it's a policy one, goal five, maybe I have the goal in the policy but backwards, of the comprehensive plan says, you're not supposed to take any land out of agriculture and put it in commercial unless all the other areas of the county that are designated for commercial now or in the future in the comprehensive plan are, can't handle it. And you could make that finding, so this, and that's your primary job, to find out if this complies with the comprehensive plan. So it's only going to be for parking, I don't have a problem with that. But it's going to be for general commercial, I think there's issues. Thank you.
My name is Kenneth Carter. My wife and I own the trading post, the gun shop out on 211. Been there for 24 years. And I'd like for everybody to look at this from a different perspective. How about alter your motives? That'd give you a different thought train. You have an honorable standing. You have to go by your laws, your covenants, everything you're dealing with. They have their alter your motive is to have a business for their family. That also is honorable. They're doing it the best they can. I've known these people for years. They're trying harder than anyone should to get what they're getting. My alter your motive, which no one has talked about, is business is dying in this county. I've been there for 24 years, and if I don't get more traffic and more tourism out here, this county is going to die. Seriously, I am down 60% of business. When Cooter, and I'm not a fan of Cooters, but don't get me wrong with this, but when Cooters was there the first time down in Sperryville and traffic was so solid, you couldn't get out of my lot. And then he left and he went and he came back up where they are now. And I already saw a little bit of a pickup, just a little bit of a pickup, and it was gaining. So that was my alter your motive. There's nothing wrong with alter your motive. Everybody has it, nobody admits it. So my motive is I want to keep my store going. I do everything I can for the school, for the fire departments, everything. I'm not going to be there if this keeps up. And if we keep this tight hold on everything and everybody without taking a deep breath and thinking, okay, yes, this could cause problems in the future, it can be dealt with in the future too. Nothing is in stone. Nothing in this world is in stone.
It's constant change.
So I would like to see Alan and Tracy have this place. I know them. I've watched them work through it. I've known them for years. And I don't see anything wrong with what they're doing. And it would help me, it would help the county, it would give us traffic, it would give us tourism, it would give us a place to go to or through. We don't have that now, guys. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
My name is Sharon Brad, and I'm going to show up. I'm interested coming in. I look at Givern Hall, it's not the same as the other industry company. And I don't know these people, but I was a real fan of Cooters, devastated when it closed. And I know how important it is to have parking in a rural area. If you don't have parking, you don't have business. And I'm looking forward to having another sandwich shop. So I support it.
Thank you. Anyone else? Now close the public comment session.
Sorry. May I use my three minutes as a?
Sure, go ahead.
Sorry, I just want to respectfully respond to Mrs. Luke and Mr. Conick. Mrs. Luke, I did speak to you prior to as a neighbor. Mr. Conick, I did not meet with you when you came by. My husband was there. And I just want to respectfully ask that my application move forward with no proffers. We have been completely transparent. 100% of what we're doing, our door has been open at all times. What we want is just for parking. If VDOT has prohibited us from parking on this concrete slab in front of our building and our application is not approved to allow us, I approached Mrs. Kaiser's office with other possibilities on how to use this section of our property for parking without a rezoning application. And it was referred that we do a rezoning application. So that's why we decided to go this route with the rezoning application. Our intent is to use it for parking. I've been 100% again, transparent what our intent is, what our goals are. Ultimately, this business is for me to be able to pass down something to my children to have them come back. They are the future of Rappahannock County. I have a son who's 14, who is a future farmer. I have a daughter who is going to be a senior in high school next year. She's going to go to college. I want her to come back. I want them to have something to come back to. I want them to be connected here, and I would just like for my application to move forward without any proffers.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now close public comment session, this for the second time. For sure, this is 1705 Old Hola Legacy Farm. Gentlemen, obviously, this is in my district. I'm going to take it in front of you. You have no objections. Very familiar with this property since I was a kid. I remember that the Atkins was there, and I did remember him, short man running through that building there as it's progressed through the different owners and different uses. I'm excited that it just doesn't become a fixture on a corner and deteriorate, and it's new life there. I think it is certainly in line with our comprehensive plan. I'll tell you, the rezoning of any piece in that county concerns me to the highest degree. And typically, I'm totally against that. And I think this is probably one property, and I just live up the road, less than a half a mile, so this affects me too. I'm talking as a neighbor, as a landowner, that this property may have an impact on it. But I do think this is probably the one place that is worthy of a rezoning. I understand about the proffer, not having a proffer, but we have to look at this, I believe, gentlemen, as what is going to be the what next? And if we don't place a proffer on it, it's, I can't imagine you doing anything else with that small piece of land for parking, the gray area there, gravel there. But what we do know is, is you can build up if there's not a proffer. That would be an ugly building or situation sitting on that corner. There's other issues that come along with that. And I'm not saying that'll ever happen, but I think as a planning commission, we have to look at the future. I have no doubt, you've got to destroy their family. I have a lot of, I would say, research on your family. I echo what everyone here has said. And I'd like to be sitting in my head when I retire and seeing your daughters and your son still out there doing what they do. And I believe they will. But that's coming from the heart. We have to really think about what's good for the county. And I'm supportive of the rezoning, but with a proffer that is for parking. I could go on and on. I don't know of anything that concerns me here other than the parking on the front of the building that's been taken care of. And I understand, I believe, there's going to be some structure in the front to block that off.
Yes, sir. There's going to be a three-board fence. BDOT requested that there be some type of a barrier installed there to prevent any vehicular access at all. So our plan is to add a three-board fence. Again, we'll go with the farm field of the county, the agricultural field of the county, as well as what we're trying to create that property to be.
I'll just make one other comment, gentlemen. I think this application has spent a lot of time in it. I know you've spent a lot of time, this applicant's spent a lot of time, boots on the ground, if you will, getting to know the community and the folks around them. That's extraordinary. I know that's, I hear Mr. Brown say that all the time about the community and getting to know your neighbors. And you heard it earlier, and I totally agree. You all have done an extraordinary job over there, and I want to compliment you on it. But I'll turn to the commissioners and Mr. Zess. Would you like to go?
Thank you, Mr. Sharon. I don't have too much to add, other than I did have an opportunity to visit the property. I had an opportunity to speak with Mr. Abdallah at length. In fact, he wouldn't let me go. I'm going to distract myself there. But it was just such a, such a great Rappahannock story, you know? They went way to Northern Virginia, worked the business for 20 years, and now they've come back. Really creating the type of businesses, the type of business that I think you really want to have in Rappahannock. And then there's the community spirit of providing employment to our young people, not only family members, but others. I'm really encouraged to hear the support of other local businesses for something like this. And I'm so favorably impressed with the attitude of asking for permission instead of begging for forgiveness. And that encompasses a lot of what you're doing. I know there's some other things in there that weren't discussed. I know you're burying overhead electric lines. You're very environmentally sensitive and done some work with the yard in perspective, making sure that, you know, there's no problem if, in fact, there's any underground tanks there from back in the old days. Leasing land to grow food that you're going to serve in your business. I understand the purpose of the planning commission is to not sit here and, you know, you say all that, actually, I'm not necessarily, but I have to say, I just thought this was so well thought out and your family is so dedicated to this. It made a great impression on me. And so I'm just turning it, this is the time of the application. I think we should just really get our arms around and support this, too.
Thank you, Mr. Sharon.
Mr. Brad?
One thing for me is important also. Good neighbor relationship and keeping young people in Rappahannock. If you look around the wrong people that are coming to Rappahannock, look like me. So anything that will keep young people in Rappahannock, I will vote for. They're only asking to rezone the parking lot. You cannot operate a store without a parking lot. So I am 100% for rezoning the parking lot only. That's all they're asking for, is the parking space, which we're issuing approved. That's my opinion.
Thank you, Mr. Sharon.
It feels, it seems to me that we're in a situation where we are dealing with a dreadful mistake. And the mistake is, how can anybody have a business on one tenth of an acre? And the result of this, it is the result of what could only, one could only think of as a poorly carried out previous zoning decision by the county, which at least in this situation is crippling the reasonable use of the business, which has been ongoing for many, many years. And so that, as far as I'm concerned, we think that we are passing judgment on this particular business. I look on it as this particular business is passing judgment on us. And that if we, and I can understand the idea of a proffer. But it seems to me that inasmuch as this business is going to depend on the parking to conduct itself, it may have to depend on other things, too. And to deny them that possibility, it seems to me a burden. And I would just finish by saying, what is it that they can do on their .4 of an acre that is going to hamstring Storyville?
Being the other discussion, I am ready to make a motion that 1705, the way the Hall LLC lengthy forms recommendation to be approved at the next level for consideration with the follow of the boundary line adjustment with the zoning component of this, be for parking. I have no other concerns that's not been addressed already. Is that a vote here? Yes. A second. For the discussion, gentlemen? All in favor of 1705, I say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Mr. Chairman, can I just ask if you would repeat the motion so I can make sure I have corrected my notes? Is it with the proffer?
With the proffer. That it only be used for... Your next step would be more circumstantial. Thank you.
Thank you.
Close the show. I have a few questions left to go.
Yes, thanks. God, God, if someone's like, oh, I'm going to do that. My son would definitely get better for that. It was huge.
You guys have to get up here and hold on.
I'll see you then.
You guys have to get up here and hold on. Gentlemen, the next item on the agenda, the old business, the amendment chart that we worked on, I guess, as you want to.
As you know, we had a lengthy chart that was reviewed with recommendations. So the next step would be to adjourn. So with your permission, we will run that ad and then add that to your agenda for next month, if that is your choosing, or put it to wait until a later date. Mr. Brady has resigned from the planning commission this term. So he won't be coming back. So we placed an ad in the paper, but it may take a while to put him on. So I don't know if you want to wait till the end of summer vacations and have the public hearing on the chart or until he's replaced or if you want to go ahead and do it next month. So your decision, gentlemen.
What do we have next month that we know of? I guess the discussion on the Fletcher application.
We have the Fletcher application. We have the bond filing application, which is a special exception for events and the return of the one term.
Jurist.
Jurist home and then also a special exception from time. So you should probably have four applications.
With discussion, would you, Mr. Sharon, have any... Just be happy. Discuss anything. It's a million-dollar question, I'm sure.
Because I think there's a few things that you've thrown that may be controversial, such as the lot size of the tourist home. So I would insist that you have some people in. And I think having the Fletcher application back on could also draw on people.
I'm sure that would be thoroughly attended. Gentlemen, would you please...
I think we ought to defer this to the end of the summer. I think the Fletcher could be two meetings.
Correct.
And I think that we ought to save our fires for our important parents.
Gentlemen, your concurrence with that?
I believe it doesn't want us. I think the body of the work on this, so...
Are we looking at August, September? August. How about to September? Is that too far?
I think September would be that.
The reason I say that is because there will maybe be two meetings with the Fletcher application that will continue to have a draw, a significant crowd. Not knowing what my other applications might be. We're all in agreement that...
I think that's very wise.
We need a motion on this or...
So I think we might just mark it in the minutes.
Everybody's in agreement?
Yes.
The conversation.
Anything that you have done in preparation for the Fletcher discussion?
Well, it would seem that we could get the same thing done for the final part. That might be a two-for-one. Yeah, if the concerns are similar. I'm not going to say they're the same, but the bid application. Yes.
I may make a request. I can't think right off the top of my head. Some other applications that we approved in the past with similar events and/or style of application. Just to kind of get the base. After you've been on a while, you kind of forget what we've done in the past and whether it be the sale.
We did one for Greenfield, the Gregory property. Very similar to that, what was, I don't, I think it was 200 or less. Maybe smaller, a smaller application.
Maybe 150.
Okay, sure.
150 or 200. One of the other...
So I have to do that, yeah, I want to just study it. We need to research that and similar applications. What we've done with those might be a sound baseline.
Are you proposing a work session of some sort? Or is that...
No, just a basic push to us. The large two, get similar applications, maybe the sale. Cliff Miller there was, with his and the conditions we put on him and the number of events and requirements and so forth. I'd just like to refresh my memory of the first one.
I think that would be a very good way to start.
So we can, not really speaking from memory.
Sure.
You all are excellent at memory.
Sure.
Plus your... How Henry will be back in a moment.
He's got a great memory.
He does.
Sometimes you remember stuff that never...
Question.
You have a question about it.
Gentlemen, if... You have anything else, I have a motion to adjourn.
I make a vote pretty good. Second?
Second.
Next meeting, July 18.